Good evening. Today's date is January 21st, 2020. It is 6:15 PM. At this time, I'd like to call for order the regular meeting of the Perry Carnegie Library Board. Roll call please, Dixie.
Holdern.
Here.
Bond.
Here.
Dilbeck.
Here.
Ahern.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Wyng.
Here.
Wines.
Here.
Stroller.
Here.
I do declare a forum. Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Josh Bell from the First Christian Church here in Perry. Thank you, Josh.
Would you please pray with me? Holy One known by many names and beyond all names, we ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live, work, and play. Help them as leaders to not ask first, "How do we fix this?", but what do we need to learn? How might we need to change? And to whom do we need to listen? Remind us all that because we forget sometimes, that especially in the noisiness of what passes for debate today, that these in front of us are not only leaders, but also servants. That it is our responsibility and to the rest of the community to serve the common good of all. We ask that you would grant them the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right, good, and true. May they and we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May they and we always be guided by the Spirit of Community, by the Spirit of Justice, and by the Spirit of Love. This we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good and right and true. May it be so. Amen.
Thank you, gentlemen. The first item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. There are two items there that can be approved at the same time, or they can be looked at individually.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Holdern.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Dilbeck.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Wyng.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes.
Moving down to item four. Are there any comments from those assembled here tonight in regard to the Perry Carnegie Library Board meeting? Seeing none, we'll move on to item five, the presentation of the Oral Quarterly Report on Library Usage and Statistics on the Perry Carnegie Library by Bobby K. Taylor, Assistant Librarian. I believe that Pam has had surgery and still recovering. So Bobby K., if you'll come up to the podium here, we appreciate you coming in tonight.
Okay. So the recent events is that we were planning for the summer reading program Savannah Riley and Pam had went to a workshop in EMD on October 3rd, and they were very disappointed in what the content was. So they planned to put in place and meet together with other librarians and brainstorm some ideas. Unfortunately, the November meeting had to be canceled and will be rescheduled at a later date. Savannah's already begun the programs and booked presenters. She also started an outreach program to local daycare centers in December, and the children have enjoyed the books, songs, finger plays, stickers, and are looking forward to monthly, future monthly visits, which she's still continuing. Also in December, the library was decorated by the staff and local NOC student Nichelle Alley for Who Needed Community Hours as a volunteer for her college class, and we later read in the Perry Daily Journal where she had earned a place at the NOCs' fall honor roll. So we were really proud to do that for her. On December 5th, Thorns Originals, Vicky Malgut, had came and demonstrated how to wrap gifts and make bows. We provided the holiday snacks, and they were a very popular program that we had that day. Santa made time in his busy schedule to visit the library and took pictures with the children. On December 10th, we provided snacks, crafts, including holiday slime and photo ops. We had several of those set up even downstairs. We had a 10-minute party appetizer program held on the 13th with different recipes that were demonstrated, tasted, and the recipes were shared. Also, party hacks and tips were shown by Mary. We want to thank the 25 people who participated in the Perry Progress Club Bunko Night fundraiser to benefit the library, and that we were very and always grateful for the Progress Club's hard work and dedication to the library. Upcoming events, Savannah is planning a stuffed animal sleepover on February 12th where the children may leave their second favorite stuffed animal overnight. We don't want the first one. She will take pictures of their adventures at the library and put them in a scrapbook for them, and they can pick up their stuffed animal on the following day. We have the local banks coming in spring of March with Marvin Demant from First Bank, and we'll talk about just how to establish credit, get a loan, and paperwork that is involved. On April 6th, we have Ritten-Arter Berry from Exchange Bank that will be educating us on home loans. And as you can see, the library has something for everyone.
Thank you, Bobby K. Is there any questions for her?
I was impressed by the programs that this small staff in a small town puts together. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Moving down to item number six. Is there any new business for the Library Board tonight? Seeing none, we'll move to item seven to a turn.
Holdern.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Dilbeck.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Charlie, more central.
Yes.
Wyng.
Yes.
Wyng.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes.
I'd like to call at order the regular meeting, Perry Municipal Authority Meeting, January 21st, 2019, or 2020, that's a scribbler error apparently, at 6:21. Roll call please.
Holdern.
Here.
Bond.
Here.
Dilbeck.
Here.
Ahern.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Wyng.
Here.
Wines.
Here.
Stroller.
Here. I do declare a forum. Thank you, Council for Borough Municipal Authority members for being here this evening. Item number one is the Consent Agenda. We have one item for your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Holdern.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Dilbeck.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Wyng.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Yes. Item number four, comments from those assembled pertaining to the items on the PMA Agenda this evening. Seeing none. Item five, proclamation, accommodation, and force inquired by the governing body. Seeing none, we'll move on to item six, consider matters relating to the PMA audits. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Reacham.
Guys, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take these two items. Representative from CBEW is not gonna be able to be here tonight. Gabby was tied up, so I'm gonna go ahead and address those audits with you all. We need to get these adopted and approved because, as you can see, the 18 and the 19 are outstanding. You know, both, the 19 was due December 31st of this year, and you know, we're just now getting it issued as far as that goes. What I, what I'd like to do though first is Tyler with Ike Bailey, who is the hospital auditor, is here tonight, to talk about a couple of the hiccups that we've had and why these are delayed and then why this piece is what it is. So let me give you just a little bit of background. Whenever we present the audit of the city, we have to present the audit of the, all of the combining units that we have. And so all of our Title 60 trusts that we effectively are the beneficiary of under GASB are required to be reported in one number. Well, that's real easy for us to take care of whenever it's the city and the PMA. You know, I mean, guys, you all are board members, you all sit over that, you do everything that's there. We have control of those numbers in City Hall. We take care of that piece. The one piece that we don't have control over though is always the hospital. And with what, with the transaction that happened and with all of the pieces that went down in 18 and into 19, you know, we've got this issue related to the hospital that is still setting out there, is still a piece that needs to be resolved. So we were unable to include those hospital numbers in our audits for the end of the year and still make deadlines that we had. We were coming up against a deadline with, with our, with one of our bondholders who was wanting these audits that are late. I mean, we're not gonna deny in any way, shape, or form that they haven't been presented and that they're late. It's just there are extenuating circumstances as to why we were unable to provide those. And instead of me just sitting back and giving you my two cents on why they were, we have Tyler to come up, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually turn it over to Tyler and let him talk for a couple minutes and kinda go through a couple of the things that have got us to this point, and then I'll take it back over and I'll actually present the audits and give you guys the insight on what's there.
Excellent. Thank you, Russ. So once again, I'm Tyler Bernier. I'm a partner with Ike Bailey and a partner on the Hospital Authority Audit. And as Russ said, unfortunately, we're still working through the fiscal year 2018 audit. So we gotta kinda take our Wayback hats on and go back about 18 months because that was the end of that year. And probably three months before that, if you remember, you entered into an agreement with Stillwater Medical Center in order to transfer the operations of the hospital. Great thing to kinda keep the hospital going. Unfortunately, when a transaction like that occurs, you effectively create an inactive entity in the Hospital Authority. And so from the date of about April 1st through year-end and kind of subsequent to that, the accounting for that Hospital Authority really didn't get tracked appropriately. A number of different reasons for that, but kind of basically, again, that it's really an inactive entity now, and the focus was on operating the hospital as is. So when we look at the audit, a lot of things had changed from 17 to 18. Effectively, most of the balance sheet on the Hospital Authority was now completely different. Rather than having accounts receivable from patients and accounts payable to vendors, all that was transferred. You have this due-to, due-from with Stillwater. There were assets, some of which you retained, like supplies and the property equipment, some of which you sold to the city, and some of which were transferred to Stillwater. So there was a lot of transactions that occurred. When we got the general ledger and the account balances from the authority, there was a lot of difficulty in trying to reconcile those balances and then also reconcile them and be able to perform audit procedures on them so that we could give an opinion on really what the ending balances were. So we kinda played back and forth for a while as to what we could do to reconcile all those transactions in order to get as clean of a report and opinion as possible. Ultimately, what we decided upon after numerous tries and negotiations is that for the audit to actually conclude, what we're gonna need to do is modify our opinion on the income statement or the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position, and the statement of cash flows. That's because transactions occurred that just can't be tracked. There's a, the cost of tracking that and going back and determining exactly what happened to show patient service revenue for which you no longer perform those services was too prohibitive. So we got to work on auditing the true balances because we knew that they existed. So we have done most of that. We're down to a handful of reconciling items. I know that there's already been settlement with Stillwater Medical Center for the transactions that occurred back and forth. There are a few items that are different from what we've been able to test from an audit perspective, so we're looking at that. Hopefully, as you're all aware as well, before the transfer of the hospital, the Hospital Authority had entered into a number of arrangements for reference lab procedures, at which point, while not illegal, they definitely were viewed negatively by the payers under which the hospital had contracts with. So those are still ongoing as well, with claims and assessments being provided, so we're trying to negotiate out those balances. So I wanted to come to discuss that because, as Russ mentioned, as you'll talk about in a minute, the city reports hopefully will be issued but with a modified opinion because they don't include the hospital. We're working on the hospital, but all inclinations will be with 2018. Again, the opinion will also be modified. Our hope is to have an unmodified opinion at least on the balance sheet or the statement of net position, and to the extent possible, as soon as possible, to get that complete. But that's kinda where we sit at this point, and I wanted to be able to provide you the opportunity to ask questions, to see, you know, where are we at, or maybe what else you might be concerned with. Or from my perspective, again, we're 18 months down the road. I have a responsibility to understand and know everything that's happened subsequent to year-end in order to report on it in those financial statements, even though we are historically looking. So ask the question as well of you, is there anything else that I need to be aware of in this position?
Well, and maybe, let me add just a little bit because you guys are, you guys are hearing terms and it's our accounting lingo, and man, we're on one page whenever it comes to this stuff, but you all, hopefully I'll explain just a little bit more. Here, here's the big piece that you do need to understand. Whenever we pull the balance sheet, whenever we look at our assets, whenever we look at our liabilities, they're going to be able to say that these numbers are good. These are our assets and our liabilities. How we got to those asset and liabilities, what revenues and expenses were on the backside, do we have proper classifications, do we have things in the right place? That's the piece that they are going to be unable to at this point to tell us, this is, this is really what happened inside the activities of the hospital for that year and the year being fiscal year 18, okay? Because there are some of those transactions that just are not being properly classified. What we will be able to do though is give you the balance sheet and, or they will, whatever they opine on it, it'll be our balance sheet that's presented, but whatever they opine on it, it will be solid numbers. We will know cash, we will know receivables, we will know the due-tos, due-fronds, we will know what the payables were at the date of the closing. You see what I'm saying? We will have those fixed pieces and we'll have those accounted for. So, and honestly, in my opinion, that's the most important part for us right now because this is not gonna be a continued operation piece. The hospital is not going, as far as we're concerned, yes, the hospital's operating, but from a financial perspective, we're not concerned about necessarily what the revenues and the expenses were. So whenever he says we kinda got to a negotiated piece and we agreed, we agreed from that standpoint. It is not going to change our impression of the financials. It is not gonna change the decisions we made or the hospital board made at that point for the hospital, whether we put these final numbers out there in the proper revenue classifications and expense classifications. What is most important is what that balance sheet looks like. And honestly, the time that they're spending in auditing this reconciliation, it may come out to our favor in, in part of it, you know, because there are some transactions that we're trying to figure out exactly what happened. And once we get to the bottom of that, and I say our favor, you guys are the beneficiaries at the end of the day of all of this. So when we get that part figured out, that's what I'm most concerned about, and that's really where my focus has been in saying, "Let's get this thing wrapped up." Because that's what we really need to know, is what does that balance sheet look like? I could care less. We're not operating the hospital anymore. And if we were, we'd be losing more money just as Stillwater has at this point, or they've reported to. So we wanna make sure that we stay out of that. I'm good with the balance sheet, and that's really what I want to see whenever this is all said and done, is solid numbers on that side. The rest of it, we'll deal with later. Do you guys have any questions, Tyler, before I, before I take back over and then kinda present the audit?
Thank you, Tyler.
Thanks for telling me. Thanks for doing that. So, so let's talk about, and guys, I promise I will not belabor you with forever discussions like our counselor across the table there would. Gotta get a jab in when I can.
Is there a stab?
Little jab here, a little jab there, right? So we have two audits tonight that you guys are going to be adopting. These audits reflect the, what was fiscal year 18 and fiscal year 19. I'm gonna address them in summary forms and really only try to point you at the most important pieces that I feel you need to know. I will tell you from the very beginning, the numbers that you all saw month in, month out, are the same numbers reflected in these audits. There were not significant audit adjustments to our budget versus actual numbers, which is what we present to you each month. The numbers that were adjusted are whenever we try to adjust those budget numbers, which are a cash basis number, to a full accrual-based number, okay? And the one beautiful thing about a GASB 34 report, and that is, that's the standards under which these are issued, the beautiful thing is, this audit report gives you all three bases of accounting. I mean, it gives you a cash basis, it gives you a modified accrual basis, and it gives you a full accrual basis set of financials. So in the old days, we used to say, before 34 was adopted, we used to say, "Ah, well, they're just cooking the books. They're only telling you what piece they want you to hear about the financials." The nice thing about this form is, there's not really another basis I would bring you for a financial statement. These are the financial statements as in any of the basis that you want to look at them. So there's not numbers hidden, there's not those things done. But like I said, the only adjustments are from our cash basis to the full accrual. And there's really two main adjustments that we're, that we make whenever we get there. Number one is we book depreciation. So month in and month out, and you'll hear it whenever we get ready to talk about the budget amendments here in a little bit, you know, whenever we go and spend $700,000, you know, on, on capital assets, in our budget basis, we expense that full $700,000. But under the full accrual basis, we take that and we only depreciate that $700,000 over the life of that asset. So we make that adjustment. The other big adjustment is related to pension liabilities. And man, Tyler will probably agree with me, probably the worst written issues that are even out there for governmental pieces, but the new recognition of pension liabilities and what they say and what they do. I'm gonna point this out to you here in just a minute, and I'm gonna show you exactly why I say it's bad, because it's bad for decision-making purposes. But whenever you look at these on a full accrual basis, we have to include it. And so whatever the GASB says, do it. Guess what? We all smile and do it, and we all just in the back of our heads kinda scratch our head and go, "Well, it said to do it, it's in there." But I promise you, it will make no change in the decisions you all would make as a council. So it's nice for the end-users to know someplace down the road that yes, maybe we have a pension liability or we have a pension asset, but we don't get to go spend that much. It has nothing to do with the daily operations and the decisions you all make for the city. It has no addition there. So let's, let's open these audit reports and let's go real quickly because you're gonna see the same thing in both of the audit reports. I'm gonna hit just the big piece. So on page one and page two of the audit, you're getting here the main key points of what, of what the audit is about. This is the auditor's opinion. This is really what we pay the big bucks for, is these two pages. Now, there's a whole lot of work that goes behind them, but this is, this is the crux of what we write the check for whenever we pay it. If you'll flip to page two, it mentions two things here, and this is, this is where I wanna focus. The second bolded heading says adverse opinion. Anybody think adverse is good? You're, you're exactly right, okay? Adverse is not good. That, that is not what you want to see whenever you're issuing financial statements. Matter of fact, the only thing worse would be a disclaimer of opinion. In other words, they couldn't issue an opinion at all. The step up from that is here, we're giving you an adverse opinion. The adverse opinion and the reason for that is strictly related to, we have not followed the whole consolidated process. We have a component unit, the hospital, that is not included in these numbers. Now, that doesn't mean that the numbers that are presented are wrong, which if you'll go on down to the next paragraph, is called an unmodified opinion. The unmodified opinion pretty much says that we do not have any modifications that would materially change these numbers and would cause the end-user to have a different decision, okay? That's, so on the numbers that are presented, we get an unmodified opinion. Guys, that's the thumbs up, okay? We get a thumbs up on everything that you as a council, Russ, and I guess to that extent, Larry, because it is, it is his city for operations. Everything that we can control, you got a thumbs up on, okay? But whenever we go out and we follow the entire GASB rules, we don't get a thumbs up. We actually get a thumbs down because, guess what? We didn't include it. We were unable to include it. Even at this point, if we were to wait for Tyler to finish his audit, and that audit comes over with an adverse opinion, we would end up with the same language in our audit. So we get no benefit by waiting any longer. It will not change our end report on what goes on. So I wanna make sure you guys understand that because honestly, that's the biggest piece of this story, and that's the biggest thing that I want you to know. What we did and what we control, you as a council control, we get the thumbs up on. Everything else, we're gonna get a thumbs down. And guys, this is, this is honestly the first in, in 20-plus years of doing municipal audits. This is the first time that I've been involved in a piece that we've actually had to take an adverse opinion. That's, that's something that I've, I've tried to avoid my entire career. I mean, we've waited, we waited 18 months hoping that we were gonna get all these transactions worked out and we were gonna get the right answers so that we wouldn't have to have this. But this is where we are. I can't fix it. There, there's no way to fix it, and this is nothing within our control that we're gonna be able to fix at this point. So we're, we're gonna move forward with that. Any other questions before I jump off of opinions? Because I've honestly never spent that long on explaining audit opinions either to the, to the board. So if we jump on down, the next section of this audit is the NDNA. If you will, flip, flip to page 11. The NDNA is just discussion. These are things that between Meredith and I and Larry, we pulled together. Some of them are required, some of them don't have to, don't have to happen. But really where I want you to look is page 11. This effectively is a statement of net position. Statement of net position is our balance sheet. It tells us what our assets and our liabilities are. It tells us where we are good and where we are bad. And guys, for the most part, you all see, what's the first two lines of this, the cash and cash investments? You guys see that every month. That is, that, those are the same numbers that are on our cash schedule. You know, those numbers don't change from what we do. The other pieces, as you run down, the receivables and the inventory, you know, because we are on a budget basis, month in and month out, none of those numbers change. We only report to you the cash pieces of what's going on in the budget. So these numbers we change at the end of the year in our full accruals, and whenever we take care of that. I told you that, that there is this pension liability and this pension piece. I'm gonna go ahead and point it out to you. If you go down, go down into the liabilities and under our non-current liabilities, the last item before total non-current liabilities is pension liability. Guys, that is the potential exposure that the city has at this point to our employees long-term. If I break it down real simple, we've made a commitment to pay them. Under our defined benefit plan, we have agreed to pay them out in their proportionate formula that, and it's in the back, I mean, we can go back and read it, but we're paying them after they retire. And we take that and the actuaries go out and compute what that number is. And once they get that number, then we turn around and we effectively look at the dollars that we've invested. So we pay in each year, you guys see that when we do the budget, and I tell you, we're putting in a 14% employer contribution to the retirement plan. All of that accumulates. So we compare that liability versus the cash and the investments that we have on hand. And whenever you net those two numbers, we're down $2.7 million on the actuarial piece. Now, why do I tell you that really doesn't matter to you? Because if you flip over to the, to page 13 and we look at the end of the day, we have the, again, the second line from the bottom, honestly, because that's about where it belongs, is at the bottom. There's a $1.58 million increase in our net assets. And that 1.5, do you get, I don't know if you see that in the first, in the governmental column. Our pension liability went down by $1.5 million effectively last year. You guys didn't do a thing about it. The investments came back, the market made its change, all of those things happened. So whatever I tell you, I'm not concerned about that piece, that's why I'm not concerned about that piece. But it does skew the overall operations of, of the, of the entity. And when we look at the cities and when we look at what's going on, that number is there and does change. So if we talk about the statement of activities, please, please flip back to page 12 with me for just a second, and I'm gonna hit this. And I promise, I'm almost done with 18. I'm gonna point out two more things to you. This, again, you guys are used to seeing budget versus actuals. In this report, again, and I'm going to say in all the brilliance of the world, everybody's used to seeing revenues first and the expenses and income second. In this report, it's not that way. The first column is your expenses, okay? So those are the bad parts, those are the things that we paid out, and then we break those out into other revenues, into charges for services, operating grants, and capital grants. And as you can see, this gives you then by department, and these are the same departments for the general government you're used to looking for. Whenever, whenever we get to our monthly financials, these are those same departments. And likewise, the business activities, same departments that are there. But you can see one by one what is going on in each of those departments. You can see what it net costs us to run the general government, $886,000. You can see what it net costs us to run the general government, eight hundred eighty-six thousand. You can see what the police force costs us, a net one point three million dollars. Um, I'm not gonna read all of them to you, but you can see what those net numbers are, um, as they go down. The difference between the governmental activities and business activities is the same thing that we talk about whenever we do the budgets. It's those that don't make money and those that do make money at the end of the day. Yes, I, Brian, Brian needed that one. Uh, I, I will tell you that the fire department, since Russell's saying out there, fire department lost three hundred and forty thousand dollars, um, for its pay. So I, I just thought I'd, Russell needed to feel a little love tonight, so we'll make sure we include you. You guys are welcome. Didn't talk about anybody else's departments. Um, the other thing that I want you to know, in the business type activities, it also includes, those numbers include depreciation. So whenever we look at the water department, you see that the water lost a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. Remember that that includes depreciation of five hundred and ninety-one thousand. So if you add that back and then you take out our capital outlay, you're gonna be seeing about the same numbers that we talk about day in and day out on our financial. So there is a reconciliation process. Um, back to page thirteen, just so I can give you the summaries. Um, in, we have net increases of our assets for the year in twenty eighteen. Um, now, in the general fund, we had an increase of one point nine million dollars of that. One point, almost one point six of it was not even related to cash that we get to use, it was the pension change. So you see what I'm saying? I, I don't want you to use that number and think, oh my gosh, the, the city made a whole lot of money that year. We really didn't make a whole lot of money that year. The pension plan changed in its asset and its valuation. So there's nothing you guys can spend, no, that, that's not extra money for Derek to go out and, and, and spend this month. Um, now, now we got the audit, that, that's not the way this works. Those are all really related to the pension piece and related to what's there. Two other quick pages, um, and, and then I will be done. Um, page twenty-nine. The only reason I'm pointing twenty-nine out is this is where the depreciation is. If you wanted to see, Russ, how did you know that it was five hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars of depreciation in the water department? You'll look halfway down the page, um, that's, those are the depreciation numbers, um, for governmental activities and business type activities. That's how I know where, what that number is and, and where it was. Um, one of the things that I guess I'll point out on there was, you know, guys, our, our total additions in, in twenty eighteen and the things that we did, um, and had working, um, was almost two million dollars that we spent that year. Now, the majority of it was bond proceeds, um, whenever I say that. So don't, don't think that we have two million dollars to go spend, because we funded it with bond proceeds. But there was a lot of street work, um, that, that came in and, and was a lot of pieces related to that. The other number, and the other thing that you guys always ask about, or boards always wanna know, is on page thirty, this is the summary of the debt, um, that we have for the year, okay? And this summary of debt gives you just a breakout of each of the business type activities, um, whether it's in, in the governmental or, or whether it's related to long-term pieces of, um, all of our commitments. So if you're wanting to know what we actually owe money for and, and how that money goes out, here is the list of who we still owe our bonds to and, and what is there. Um, that always comes up at budget time, especially for the new council members. This is one of the pieces that, that you guys will wanna know is what are, what are we paying in bond payments and, and what is out there? Um, there is one other report that we pay for, um, whenever they complete this audit. And if you'll look at page forty-eight and forty-nine, um, yes, this is, this is a long document. Um, it, it's one of those things that is so much fun to put together and so much fun to have. But page forty-eight and forty-nine is the other required audit report, and it's the report on internal controls. Um, when there is a finding, uh, so there are no findings noted within here, which is something that is a big pat on the back to Dixie, um, and the girls within the office, really, because from a financial standpoint, they've done, done a great job of dotting their i's, crossing their t's, following the internal control mechanisms that we've set up and designed to, so that we don't have findings. But if we did have something wrong, and, and if something was, was not functioning correctly, if there was an internal control deficiency, it would show up in this report, and it would show up as findings, um, subsequent to that. Our goal is to always have no internal control findings.
So in other words, if there was one person that, um, brought in the cash and, and balanced out that, that register, uh, and there was no one, another set of eyes, that would be a finding?
That would be a finding, yes, the segregation of duties. So, so, so whenever, whenever we're talking about internal control, we're talking about the design of the system. And the design of the system in order to mitigate any potential fraud or any potential exposure that we would have to a misappropriation of assets, to, to something that would defraud the system and defraud the city of additional money. So that, that being one of the items that, that we look at, um, we do that. So, guys, that is the twenty eighteen audit report. I promise I will not talk that long on twenty nineteen, but do you have any questions about twenty eighteen before you adopt? Um, or approve? You just have, actually, you're accepting. Accepting, thank you, Mayor.
On the, uh, on the pension change.
Yes.
What is the rate of return that the actuaries have right now? I know it fluctuates from year to year. One year it's four percent, which makes it more difficult for, for municipalities and, and private industry to get a hundred percent funded, which I know that that's, that's the end goal, is to become a hundred percent funded.
Right.
Uh, and sometimes, some years it's eight, so do you have an idea what that might be?
The, the rate of return that was held on our investment, let me make sure I get, so, now that you asked the question, let me go ahead and explain a little further. Gosh, man, I smell like Bryce tonight.
That's two, Russ.
Two.
You get three.
We actually participate. I get three? I'll use it, I'll use it. I've got, I've got plenty of other items here. We actually participate in multiple pension plans. The majority of our participants are in the police. We also have the fire pension plan and we have the police pension. So we actually participate in three different pension plans, and each one of them containing their own pieces. So as you start back through the footnotes on thirty-three, pretty much page thirty-three, um, through page thirty-nine, um, so for six pages, we tell you anything and everything that potentially you would want to know about our pension plans. Everything from who, who qualifies for it, to how much they're getting, to what their rate of returns are being, and, and to where those numbers add up. Um, so we start off with, in A, which is the police pension plan, um, back, back to thirty-five, we get the firefighter pension plan. And then Larry, I, I think really the piece that, that you're wanting to address is C, which is the, the general employee's pension and, and what we're doing there. Um, whenever you, whenever you look at that piece, um, our net, our net return on that was seven point seven five percent, um, was what we were expecting on, on, on the weighted average rate of return for our pension plan in, in fiscal year eighteen. That number does change year over year and runs out as we get through different years. But, um, and, and like this year, you know, I mean, whenever, whenever we get, whenever, whenever we get to the end of, of twenty twenty, and with the stock market up and with those kind of things, that, that investment rate will be, will be twelve, thirteen percent right now. You know, I mean, if, if we were to go pull and look at that. Mind you, they invested a whole lot of things and, and they stay conservative, but that's what the pension funds are, are there for. And, and that's why we, we do it. Um, you know, guys, remember, this is a defined benefit plan, meaning it, it is set. It is not a defined contribution plan. Define, defined contribution plans are traditionally what our 401Ks are, or what your, or, or if you have an IRA or, or Roth, um, a set, a simple. Those are defined contribution plans, meaning you put the money in and whatever it grows to under your discretion and, and your choices, that's what you get at the end of the day. Um, that's not what we offer here at the city, and that's not what any, any, well, I'd say any municipalities. It's what, most municipalities don't offer that, that setup. They offer a piece like this that is a defined benefit. You work here X number of years, once you're vested, you're now eligible to retire at X, Y, and Z. So, um, that, that's what the pension does for us.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions for Russ?
If you talk this much all night, we're just gonna request Gary.
Man!
I thought I was helping Bryce out.
Actually, it, it, it's been two meetings since, since I was here, and I felt like I needed to make up for two meetings worth in one piece. All right, Jamie said I can't talk anymore. Twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen says exactly the same thing that I explained to you there. Please flip to the same pages that I told you to flip to and see the exact same numbers of, if you will note, the pension liability went down to two point three million dollars. Um, and whenever we jump over, you know, you'll have to factor that out of the net income and expenses for the year. And our debt is this time on, ah, it's still on page thirty, amazingly. So debt is on page thirty. Do you have anything else you'd like for me to say, Jamie?
Yes, so the adverse opinion on this one, does that do the same reason?
Do the same reason, yes. Um, so whenever we, whenever we roll out the year, um, we are still minus the hospital, and that is the only thing that we're minus. The rest of the pieces are in there and are effectively clean. Um, I, we used to call them unqualified, then we changed it to unmodified, because, I, I don't know. Why did we change it to unmodified? Just because somebody in the profession thought that unqualified didn't sound as cool as unmodified. So anyhow, whatever, um, these are unmodified, and that is, that is where, that's where they lie. Um, if you look at the internal control report, again, the same page, page forty-seven and forty-eight, um, there is nothing included in there that would be a finding or something that we need to have. Now, that would be fastest audit report that I've ever done also.
Just sign up for Bryce, give me a hard time.
Question? If there's no questions, we need to, uh, have a motion to accept audits.
Make a motion to accept both audits, two thousand eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Coleran.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Delbe.
Yes.
Eber.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes, thank you, Councilman. Item seven, consider approval of budget amendments for F Y two thousand nineteen dash two thousand twenty for a net decrease in fund balance for the P M A of eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars. And I hate to disappoint y'all, but Mr. Meacham?
I'll see what you have to say.
We need to decrease the fund balance by ninety-two thousand dollars. You all have approved, everything within the, um, P M A piece are items that, um, you all have approved. The biggest piece is an addition. We do not have a qualified number exactly on the Black Bear Creek, um, acquisition numbers, but the seven hundred thousand dollars is what we've been discussing. Um, it should be more than enough at this point, fingers crossed, unless councillor over there decides to give away the farm at some point.
Three.
No, I didn't say Bryce.
Buy the farm would be.
Buy the farm.
Yeah.
Um, it should, should be enough to, to get us there. So, um, I think whenever we net all of these out and, and what we end up spending on that, I do expect us to kind of break even for the year. I can go to a lot more detail. Any discussion? Jamie doesn't wanna hear it from me.
Just teasing.
Item seven, any discussion?
I don't take teasing very well.
I can tell.
It's almost offensive. There's no discussion, we need a motion of approval.
I make a motion to approve the budget amendments presented for F Y two thousand nineteen, two thousand and twenty.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Coleran.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Delbe.
Yes.
Eber.
Yes.
Marshall.
In.
White.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes. Item number eight is new business. Is there any new business that needs to be discussed in front of the P M A receiving? Seeing none, item number nine.
Motion to adjourn.
Can you name?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Coleran.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Delbe.
Yes.
Eber.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes.
Jeez, I really did hurt his tone.
He's going home.
Can't leave.
Okay, I'd like to call it over the regular meeting of the City Council, City Perry, uh, January twenty-first, the year twenty twenty, at six fifty-eight. Roll call, please.
Coleran.
Here.
Bond.
Here.
Delbe.
Here.
Eber.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
White.
Here.
Moral.
Wines.
Here.
Here. Uh, thank you, Council. Uh, the consent, uh, consent agenda is item number one. There's a very lengthy list. We can approve them or we can have discussion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Coleran.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Delbe.
Yes.
Eber.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Yes. Items, uh, let's see, uh, item four, comments from those assembled pertaining to the items on the city agenda this evening. Seeing none. Item five, proclamation accommodations reports and inquiries by the governing body. I do have a couple of things. Uh, we have set a, uh, a strategic planning, uh, session for February twenty-fourth. Uh, I know that we sent, uh, three dates out, uh, not everybody could attend any of them. So we just kinda had to pick a date, and, uh, that's the date that we have settled on, is February twenty-fourth. Uh, it will be from nine A M until four, five o'clock, hopefully we meet up by four. Uh, it will be at the, at the Heritage Center this year. Dinner or lunch will be provided, we'll work out the details on that. If, uh, if there was a couple of you that said you couldn't be there, and if there's any way possible, we appreciate you guys being able to try to, to work those issues out. Uh, the other item that I have, uh, I'll put Terrence on the spot. Terrence, would you like to introduce your, your new assistant manager?
Yeah. Guys, this is Nick Norwood, my assistant manager. Um, he's been working there for about, what, four months?
Four months, yeah.
Four months. So he's got to ride along with the process of the end of the mowing season and built his fair share of fences and stuff like that.
Cool. Well, welcome aboard, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, anything else on item five? If seeing none, I will move on to item six, the city manager's report, monthly update.
Thank you, sir. First of all, I wanna thank Dixie for being the acting city manager while he's out on leave, I appreciate that. Um, and the rest of my time I'd like to give to Kayla Shrum and Noel Black for your, your comments, ladies, please.
Okay, um, I do want to mention, I'm Noel Black with the Chamber of Commerce. Um, we do have, um, a couple of events coming up this week. Um, on Thursday, January twenty-third, Rise and Pies is having a ribbon cutting to celebrate their one-year anniversary. So that will be at ten thirty. Um, if you guys are available, please come out and support Denise for investing in Perry. We're very appreciative of her, and she's doing very well, she has great treats there. Um, so that will be Thursday at ten thirty. Um, on Saturday, the twenty-fifth, is our fifth annual trout fishing tournament. Um, that tournament we hold out at C C C Lake. Um, registration starts at six A M. So if you wanna brave the cold and wake up early, come out there, um, they are pulling in at six A M. They want to get on the water and fish. It does look like it's gonna be a great day, um, so we're really hoping for a good turnout. Um, the first three kids to register will receive a fishing pole from, um, McGar's Carpentry and Roofing. So we do appreciate them, and, um, Seth Wadley sponsored coolers for our prizes. So we do awards for biggest fish, smallest fish, and biggest stringer. So if you've never been, um, out there for that event, I do encourage you to go. Um, it really is nice, we get, um, a lot of comments on C C C Lake, just how beautiful it is, uh, and the fact that we have trout fish out there. So, um, they are planning to stock them this week, so it should be, um, full for our tournament on Saturday. Um, so, um, like I said, if you guys have, um, have that day available, please come out there. We do weigh-ins at eleven thirty, so, um, we'll have the skills out there, weigh the fish, and then, um, award the fishers for that. Um, it's really fun event just to be out there and see it. Um, so that is Saturday, um, six to eleven thirty. Kayla Shrum with me and Trudy Perry. I have my entire report and all the attachments to read that I sent out.
Not dinner.
Um, we, um, finished up the Christmas parade, that kept us busy and shot small through December, and now, um, focused on finishing the awards that we submit to the Oklahoma Main Street. Um, we had two in top three last year, and we're able to resubmit those and kind of go back through them and review and see why we didn't win. And, um, we have a lot of other, um, exciting ones that we're gonna enter along with those. So just finishing those up before they have to be in the office in the city by five o'clock, January thirty-first.
Any questions? Thank you, ladies. I appreciate you guys coming to do that for us.
And one last thing, I wanted to thank Danny Shade with, for the Sullivan Auction. It's an online auction company. We put Beast out there and received sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars for that. The total price was paid by a Tennessee entity for seventy-five thousand, nine hundred. So, if you've ever watched these online deals, they put them out there for maybe three weeks, four weeks, nothing happens until probably a few days before, and then it starts to really get some business in the day of, and especially right before the termination, the sale termination, it really goes crazy. So, when I went on to thirteen thousand, I thought, that was probably two, three days before. Nah, this thing, that's almost what we paid just to fix it last time. And then I was really surprised by the final sale, so thanks to Danny Shade, so. Any questions? Thanks, sir.
Can't imagine two people wanting that thing.
Yeah, yeah, from Tennessee, he's already got it, got it last week.
Cool. Any questions for Larry? Okay, item seven, chief financial officer's report. Go again. Kick back, guys, I got some time. You're going to take me off the agenda if I keep on talking too long, so. Make sure I don't turn into... There's an item eight for you too, okay? Oh, I still got more coming? All right. Guys, really, if I had something significant, I would tell you, two pieces. Number one, month-to-date, from, for what was January collections of this year versus January collections of last year, we're down about seven point three percent. This reflects really November activity. Guys, I will tell you from the sales tax standpoint, I'm talking sales tax, sorry, I jumped ahead and didn't say I was talking sales tax. I will tell you across all of our communities, I've seen the exact same thing. We, right now, we're holding our breath. We won't know until February what our December sales tax collections are, but we're hoping that we get that made up in what's deposited in February. If you think about how Christmas fell, or not, how Thanksgiving fell, it really fell that last Thursday. We only had three days of November activity, really for shopping. So, all of you that were doing your shopping, you know, didn't even get it all done before Cyber Monday kicked in, and that was already a new month. So, we are hoping that whatever all of this plays out, and when we look at the two-month collections for this year and last year, that that kind of plays out. We do end up with that exact, almost same situation again this year, so it's just something that we, on the back end, will be building into our expectations, but I do want you to know that it was down. I'm hoping that it does not continue. One thing that I would point out to you is the use tax collection, and here to date, the significant increase in use tax collection. That has a lot to do with our, with our online shopping. So, those of you that aren't shopping local, please continue to shop online and ship here, because while we will not get it in the sales tax line item, we do get it in the use tax line item. So, it still is a benefit to the city. So, that increase is actually, it's a positive for us. Now, it doesn't offset, if you do the dollar-for-dollar, I mean, we're not offsetting dollar-for-dollar what we've been down, but it is a good trump-up for the city, and we need more use tax. If it's not going to be sales tax, we want it to be use tax. The other thing that I was going to point out this month was, was the hotel-motel tax collections. We did collect two months for one entity, but we still would have been over eighteen thousand dollars. They had slow paid from the month before, so what we didn't collect in November, they paid twice. They gave us Novembers and Decembers in December, and that's why we were up. But bottom line, we still would have been over the eighteen thousand, which is a good number for us. That covers all of our debt payments and gives us the money that we needed long-term to get that part finished out. So, that's really where we are on that piece. Everything else in here is really seasonality, except for Brian. I'm going to pick on Brian again. But man, our fire department is doing so great today. Just kidding. All right, that's all I have tonight, guys.
He carries a phaser, you know.
I'm afraid of this. I wish you'd just pull it out and put me out of my misery. I mean, you know, let's get it over with. Any questions for us on the financials?
The community that lives in the, they live out in the city, does use tax come in for them?
No.
Okay, I figured that was the answer, but I get asked that.
It is, it is within our jurisdiction, so. Same rules for sales tax, you know.
Yeah, I figured that was the case.
If you put a physical building there, and they were to charge sales tax, use tax runs the same way. It literally mirrors what we do.
Those people could have it shipped to an address within the city limits, and then we would get the use tax.
We would get the use tax, yes. They would ship it to...
So, we could put it in lockers?
Hey, we might open it up at City Hall, and I mean, hey, for use tax money, we could, we could drop it. Do not ship it to City Hall, guys, that's not what I'm saying, but anything inside the city limits, yes, would be better for us. We need like a UPS or a FedEx Depot to come get it. Here, pick it up here. Exactly.
Like the Amazon lockers, that's what I just said. No Perry lockers.
Okay, item eight, consider matters related to the city PMA audits. Who wants to? I took twenty-five minutes last time, I'll see if I can do it and have nothing to add. This is the same stuff he talked about on the PMA side, we just have to accept the audit on the city side also.
Motion to accept. Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? Roll call.
Colar.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Delbeck.
Yes.
Ayer.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes. White.
Yes.
Lines.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Item nine, consider approval of budget amendments for FY two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty with a net decrease in fund balance for general fund of ninety-three hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars, I'm sorry. Oh, Mr. Meacham. Again. I don't want to insult yours. He's the Meacham Show tonight, isn't he? I'm going to send Meredith next time that I've talked this much in a meeting. The, if you just run down, guys, big pieces here that you need to know. We're budgeting the Malsal money coming in, we're also budgeting the hotel-motel tax. The sales tax for the hospital is in here, and those are the two big adjustments that we're really budgeting for. The other pieces that are on here are items, the street project, the parks project, and we're both items that you guys had already approved. Kate, through council, you guys have done the whole nine yards on those, so. And then the code enforcement is moving some of the personnel charges around. We had them in personal services, this is getting, our, having them contract clever, just getting into personal services and covering that part. So, that is, those are the budget items, the amendments that we have. Is there any questions? I have one question for Larry. The three thousand dollar for the city hall construction, is that, is that the total, is that done?
It's done.
That's, that's all the expenses?
Right, I think we came in just a little bit underneath that. Last time I checked, it was like twenty-six, twenty-seven hundred dollars or something like that, so.
Let's just, we usually round up just to give us a few dollars here. Yeah. Budget a dollar. What do you want to do with this, Council?
Make a motion to approve the budget amendments presented for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Colar.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Delbeck.
Yes.
Ayer.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Lines.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes, thank you. Item number ten, consider action on application for closing alleys. Number, or letter A, conduct a public hearing for the closing to the public use of the east, three hundred feet of the alley running east and west in block thirty-five in the original township of Perry, Noble County, state of Oklahoma, according to the records of the plat map therefore. And the rest of it's just all the legals. So, this is the public hearing on closing. B?
Can you explain where those are, other than legal?
Bryce, would you do that for me?
I think Bob can. It's Bob's house.
It's block thirty-five, and it's two hundred and seventy feet that we're closing, not three hundred.
Okay, this is on top of the hill, on boundary, south boundary?
Yes.
Okay.
East boundary.
East boundary.
East boundary.
I meant the south end of the boundaries, where I'm at, so.
Right. It's on east boundary, it's the hill. There's a right-of-way at the bottom, that's why it's only going two hundred and seventy feet. I'm avoiding the right-of-way just to my property line. We're leaving it open at the bottom, that way the line trucks can get back there. There's telephone drop line back there, and we were going to change that out some time ago and bring it underground, so we wouldn't even be back there, it's wet all the time. But I just wanted to get that closed, me and my neighbor was going to make a transaction. That's how I found out that the right-of-way was there. I meant the five-foot setback from the original property lines, but if anybody knew, like I said, what Shale Hill used to look like, you couldn't park two pickups at the top of it, and I dozed off ten feet of that and haul brush for a year to get it cleaned up, so it's just, and my garage is in the middle of it right now. So, that's why we're trying to get this closed, so me and my neighbor can make our transactions.
Thank you, Bob.
We sent notices to all budding property owners in that area, plus all utility companies that had any interest. There are no utilities in the two hundred and seventy, east, two hundred and seventy feet. And in fact, we prepared the ordinance to meet that. It's just originally, when we sent out the notice, that's what was requested, and that's what we put. But the ordinance is amended to not include anything that would have any utilities. And we have heard nothing from any budding property owners. The planning commission met today, and they recommended this closing to the, to the city council.
Is there any other questions? Did you get your question answered, Betty? If not, we will now go on to B. Consider approval of ordinance number two thousand twenty dash oh-two, closing the public, closing to the public the east two hundred feet, two hundred and seventy feet of the alley running east and west in block thirty-five in the original townsite of Perry, county of Noble, state of Oklahoma, in accordance to the record of the plat map therefore. And the rest of it's just all legals. What do we want to do, Council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Colar.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Delbeck.
Yes.
Ayer.
Yes.
Marshall. Yes.
White.
Yes.
Lines.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes. There is an emergency, we have a motion on emergency.
Second. Second.
Roll call, please.
Colar.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Delbeck.
Yes.
Ayer.
Yes.
Marshall. Yes.
White.
Yes.
Lines.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Item number...
Thank you, Bryce.
Number eleven, consider authorizing the city manager to send a letter to the Federal Aviation Administration stating that the city of Perry plans to proceed with the proposal of three dash forty dash oh, seven seven dash oh, one five dash twenty twenty, AIP grant for construction, improve, which has improved the airport drainage in northwest area of the airport, improved fuel farm for the federal funding in the amount of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars, and make available a local match of ten percent of the federal grant amount.
Now, we have received, and in front of you is an email from Toby Baker. Neither Larry nor I, who this was addressed to receive this, in time to amend the agenda. And because of that, it constitutes new business. If you can't, if, if, if it's new and you couldn't have amended the agenda, you can actually take action on this. What this says is that the Blackwell-Tonkwa Airport may be willing to release some of their funding in this year to allow us to do this entire project, the whole drainage project, and in addition, the whole fuel farm project. And of course, because of mobilization alike, it's good to do projects all at one time. What many municipal airports do, because all of them don't have projects scheduled at the same time, and all of them don't have airport engineers working on those projects at the same time, some don't even have airport engineers working on a project, is we like to retain all that money in the state of Oklahoma, so the various airports trade those allocations. And what we're saying here is that if Blackwell-Tonkwa is willing to trade their allocation now, that I believe in, in two years, we would take our funding and we would trade it back to them. Now, we do have the airport, guys, if there's any questions on exactly what this drainage would be, or what this fuel farm would look like, I'm sure that you could address those issues. But I think if you agree that it could all be done at the same time, that you could make a motion based on the new business item, that in the, to approve this item, but in the event that the Blackwell-Tonkwa Airport decides to release that funding to us, that we do the full project in the amount as the numbers that are set here, which is six hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred dollars, with a ten percent match of seventy-one thousand, eight hundred dollars. So, I think that that motion could also be made today. Would you want to address this airport? I mean, do you want to hear about the project?
What we'd be looking at?
Yeah. Come up and tell us about both of these projects and the benefit to the city for these projects.
Okay. So, the, the north half project, where we're improving the drainage, right now, if you were to go on Google Earth and take a look, you'd see there's a massive ditch north of the, well, the furthest north hangar, it's past that. The idea is to fill that in and get it graded out, so that later on, should somebody decide to build a hangar there, we would have the drainage set up. Now, what I was talking with Toby was, when they do this, they're going to have to run a large, basically drainage line that will continue on. Now, at some point, it does have to drop into a ditch going down into the creek, which would just be an extension. It should cut this one down quite a bit. But he's only looking at putting possibly one drop for the, this entire line. So, it's going to take all of the drainage from the south side of the airport and work it down to the north side where the creek runs. And he had said that probably the reason they're only going to do one drop, or assume that we're only going to do one drop, is just to cover some drainage in that area that could be issued. And then each time a hangar, a new hangar is installed, that's going to come with part of it. So, if somebody wants to install a hangar, then they're most likely going to have to pay for the drop to go into the existing line, which is not a big deal. It's basically dig down, put the grate, and there's a saddle that goes over the line that allows the water to continue on down. So, it's not too big of a deal, but it's just there for future development. Now, the fuel farm, looking at putting that, if you guys probably, I don't know if you've seen it out there, the way it's set up. Right now, the fuel farm's out in the middle of a piece of concrete. Where that fuel farm is, we're going to move it directly south and put it off the edge. So, there would be a pad there, there'd be two tanks come in, they'd set them out. The only thing that we have to hook up would be electrical. Talked to Brian about that, and we think we can piggyback what's already run out there and bring it over to power the fuel system. It's only one major pump and then a control outlet for reading credit cards and stuff like that. So, it only takes that. They've since then not had to run wires from out there to inside the building. Technology finally caught up, they actually just put a SIM card in them, and it goes to the cell network, and then you just log on to their system, and you can read any, any fuel transactions that happen. So, it does away with that. So, it does away with that. But for the most part, yeah, it's gonna move right up there to the, uh, to the south end just a little bit. It'll make more access there. Uh, the existing fuel farm will, should be able to be leveled out, um, in the center there, giving us a little more ramp space. Plane shouldn't have any problem pulling up, fueling up, and then continuing on. So, hopefully, this'll pick up our night sales. Um, right now, we show that we only fuel between the hours of eight and five unless you call out. So, most people that look online are going, "Yeah, we'll go on over to Stillwater, they're open later," or "We'll go on just to Oklahoma City and plan for that." At least this one, they could look at it and go, "Okay, they've got self-serve fuel there. Probably come in at nine o'clock at night, run my car, gas my plane, continue on." So, it kinda allows for more aircraft to come in like that. That's pretty much all I've got, do you, any questions?
Hang on a second, Chris. Well, what I'm, what I'm confused about is, you know, or- originally, in, in the paperwork that we got, it says that this project's gonna be four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. And then over here, it's saying that it's, we're gonna have a capability of seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. That's two hundred and fifty thousand dollar difference.
What was the original paperwork you got?
The original one said four thou- or four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy. And this letter we just got from Toby says seven hundred and eighteen thousand.
See, this is the, that letter's the only thing that I've received from Toby on that.
Okay, well, we-
So, I'm not sure what-
This one here's from, uh, Mark Colditz, some, some kind of program manager from the Federal Aviation Administration. And that's what was in our, that's what was in our preliminary report, in our, in our agenda item, was four hundred and sixty-eight thousand. So, I'm just kinda confused on where those two numbers come from. Do you have any idea, Bryce?
Well, I mean, w- we had received that first, uh, it wa- was included in the packet was what was sent, I believe, on January seventh. Uh, apparently, this idea of being able to fully fund this project with that, because what they do is they seek allocations from other, uh, from other airports.
So, what you're saying is that the four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, it wasn't fully funded?
Uh, tha- that's the way I'm looking at it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or he wouldn't have made this recommendation.
Well, I mean, it's amazing, it's two different guys making the recommendation.
He says, "Now that we have earthwork volumes for the drainage ditch improvement on the north end, we're estimating a total project cost for both drainage improvements, installation of the ABGAS and jet systems at seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollars." And then he gave you a way to ge- you know, to get that money is, is, is what that is. And of course, this, you know, this came in at a time when we couldn't, uh, get the agenda amended, uh, neither of us saw it until Saturday.
What's PE stand for? I forgot his name, it says PE.
Uh, professional engineer.
So, the professional engineer says it's gonna cost four hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
Oh, this, Toby Baker's the man. I mean, we really have a-
He's also a PE.
He's a PE, too.
Yeah. No, but we have a premier, uh, CDC corporation is, uh-
And I think that originally, he was telling us, that's the amount available to us was that. That's the funding we have, this four sixty-eight.
Okay.
Then if we can get this, Blackwell-Tonkwa, it'll increase it for that.
Okay. So, it wa- it wasn't fully funded then, probably four sixty-eight?
Right.
Okay.
Not to do all the drainage component, because the price to move dirt is so expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And to us, the, the fuel farm was the most important thing, that's the thing that we had to-
Yeah.
We had to do that.
This'll be two different companies doing two different things, right? I mean, you're not gonna have you guys doing the drainage ditches, they're gonna do your-
I don't believe so, I don't think that's the way Toby's got it set up.
They're gonna build it separately, yeah.
It's gonna be done in two separate portions. The, uh, the fuel farm itself, like I said, is just pouring a pad. So, you're gonna be dealing with a concrete company for the most part.
Yeah, you're not gonna be doing dirt work after it.
The dirt work aspect of it, who, whoever he's got in mind for that, um,
I'm sure it'll be, it'll be a bid situation, I'm sure.
Yeah, and I'm sure he's gonna pull in bids on it, so. Says we'll bid the two components a separate base bid. It's just as far as the federal funding's concerned, they were trying to wrap it all into one go.
And in previous council, we, we did move some of our allocation to Fairview, year, year before last, I believe.
What are you gonna do, council?
Make a complicated motion? Try it.
Go, boy.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to authorize the city manager to send the FFA, FAA letter committing to the entire project, which would be the drainage and the fuel system, for a total of seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Ninety percent of that would be FAA, six hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred, with the city match of ten percent of seventy-one thousand, eight hundred dollars, with the understanding that the Blackwell-Tonkwa Airport Trust Authority would transfer three hundred thousand dollars for two years of funding to us, to the, um, Perry Airport, Municipal Airport, in which case, in two years, we would, um, reciprocate and return funding back to them.
Very well said.
Second.
Yes.
Perfect.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Calder.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Dillberg.
Yes.
Aker.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you all. Item twelve, consider approval of a memorandum of understanding and mutual aid service agreement with the Polka Enterprise Gaming LLC for reimbursement of a lease purchase payment to be made for the first responder vehicle and related equipment by the city of Perry upon receipt of the execution MOU and authorize, authorize the mayor to execute the most favorable lease purchase agreement with a financial institution that meets all Oklahoma requirements and, and acquire the vehicle and the equipment. Okay. The, we know that the, the Polka Tribe is putting in the casino out north on four-twelve and I-thirty-five. Uh, this is, uh, an LLC that was created a few years back. Uh, it's called the Polka Enterprise Gaming LLC, it's not the, it's not the tribe, it's, it's a subsidiary of the tribe. And we are required to be first responders to, to that facility, uh, with our, with our fire and ambulance, that's, that's our fire district. And so, they, uh, have come forward and said that they want to equip a truck for us. Kind of a good faith partnership that, that we, they appreciate us to be willing to come out and help them at their facility. Russell, would you like to, just for a minute, just talk about the truck itself, what it's gonna have on it?
Uh, sure.
And the need for it.
Okay. Um, so, actually, about two or three years ago, um, was when this first came up. A lot of departments call it an emergency response unit, or ERU. Um, the one closest to us that I know of that utilizes something like this is Deer Creek Edmond. Uh, but there are a lot of services that have them, typically, the other services, the larger s- the larger services that have them use them for what we call supervisor units. So, if an ambulance gets on scene and needs further direction or guidance for, from a clinical standpoint, they would call the supervisor and they would show up in this type of unit. The way we would use it, um, is it would basically be stocked exactly like an ambulance. There would be no difference between it and an ambulance. The only difference being there wouldn't be a cot to load a patient on, go back to the back of the truck. Um, the need for this come up, um, I mean, it's, it's been several years and, and when I started here in two thousand, we made just over three hundred calls in the ambulance, on the ambulance side of things. Um, on December thirty-first, we had, uh, completed nine hundred and sixty-five ambulance calls. And so, what we're, what we're seeing is with our, our, our personnel numbers really have never changed since eighteen ninety-three, we always had. We have, we have pictures from eighteen hundreds of where there was the same number of personnel. So, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to mitigate these call numbers where, and, and just taking other avenues to do that. Um, what, we're a combination fire department, so we have full-time paid staff and then we have a group of volunteers called, called firefighters. Every one of those positions are required to be certified at least what we call emergency medical responder level. Um, and the state requires, uh, that certification to at least drive an ambulance. The, the training and the education that they receive allows them to be able to, to treat, um, sick and injured patients just like an emergency medical technician. Um, but the only difference is, the, one of the biggest differences is you have to be licensed at an EMT at minimum to provide patient care in the back of an ambulance during transport. So, the way we're made up up there is there are eight emergency medical responders and those are all of our volunteers, I mean, that are EMR. We have a couple of our volunteers that are EMT and then we have one that's what we call an advanced level EMT. That's the ones that can start IDs, that can do advanced airways. Uh, so, our total makeup is eight EMRs, eight EMTs, and five advanced EMTs. Uh, but what we find is when we exhaust all of our resources, um, where if we have, if we have two people on duty like we do today, if that ambulance goes out, or a fire truck goes out, two more people voluntarily sign up for callback and then they come to the fire station. And now, they're essentially on standby for another call. Um, so, what happens is, when a second ambulance goes out, we have, the only people that typically we have left to come in, um, that are available, a lot of times, we're, most of the time, what we're seeing is they're emergency medical responders. We're not, the State Department of Health, our regulatory agency, does not allow them to respond in an ambulance. And we wouldn't want them to anyway, because if they respond with an ambulance and start providing care and then people on this, you know, the people involved in whatever say, "Hey, why aren't you leaving to go to the hospital?" And then they're gonna have to say, "We're waiting for someone qualified to get here to drive, to get us there." Um, so, that's gonna look pretty, pretty bad for us. We could take a fire truck and we could put, you know, a large bag in a fire engine and respond to, to provide aid to someone. Uh, the problem is, if we're there on that scene, we can't forget that we provide fire and ambulance protection. So, if a fire call comes in, we can't leave with whatever fire truck we just took there. Um, 'cause then otherwise, we abandon the patient. And so, then we lose our service license. So, there's just these, these items that we're trying to address, um, and we just felt like this was gonna be the best fit for us. Uh, basically, we, we've always talked about how, we, we've always had three ambulances here and we've always talked about how the, the, the last ambulance is like it, it just goes to the, the graveyard over there. I mean, that's where it goes to die. Um, we, we, when we first purchase a new ambulance, it's the one that makes all the emergency nine-one-one calls. Um, and then after it is to the time where it needs to retire, so to speak, it goes to a, an- another bay where it just takes inter-facility transfers, where it's just driving down the road, but it's not driving emergently with lights and sirens, not being driven real hard. Um, and then whenever that one gets replaced and we just keep shifting them, it moves over to the last bay. Well, the, our, our problem is, we don't have enough staff to run three ambulances. I mean, that's just what it comes down to. And so, without having the staff for three ambulances, we would, with something like this, that was the proposal a few year, you know, a couple of years ago, um, is that with something like this, it would at least give us the, the capability to respond and provide treatment until a transport agency arrived. Now, that may not even be Perry Fire Department ambulance, it may be Tonkwa ambulance, it may be Life Net from Stillwater, it may be Live VMS from Enid. So, yeah, there is a chance that, that it, getting transportation may take a while. But that's the same situation we're in right now, because if we respond with an ambulance, we can't, we can't transport, so we're either gonna sit there on scene for that amount of time or the only other option is to illegally transport patients and we're not gonna do that, so. That's what, that's what, uh, created the need for the ambulance.
It just ha- it takes that hardship away from the, the, your, your emergency responders staff to go out there and deal with that issue. Thank you, any, any questions for Russell at all? Thank you, Russell. Uh, there is a, there is a printout at, at, at your table that, uh, that's signeeed that the Polka Enterprise Gaming LLC. I do know that that emblem somehow will be on the vehicle, like a sponsorship type, I mean, it's gonna say Perry Fire Department, but this, this symbol also will be on the, on the, uh, the vehicle. Uh, and how, how, how it's all gonna come together and, and work is that I've said we weren't gonna borrow any more money, 'cause I feel like we've borrowed enough money, but the tribe is gonna make our payments for us, they're gonna make our lease payments. So, if everything goes as planned, uh, in four years, the, the, the lease will be paid off, the, the piece of equipment will be ours permanently. And, uh, I think it's just a great opportunity and a great fit for, for our fire department with someone else, uh, volunteering, uh, to find, or make the payments for us.
Yeah, that, that's almost absolutely correct with one exception, and that may have been the exception that got changed, uh, today. And that is that at the end of four years, they have an option to acquire the vehicle for a dollar. So, it's really, uh, they're making all the payments on it, we get all the use of it, you know, for the four-year period. At the end of that, they've made all the payments, they have a right to acquire it for a dollar. And then we're hoping at that point that, you know, that they'll enter into a similar agreement with us. I, I did put that provision in the agreement and I think, uh, it got struck out because I think they'd like to make that decision at, at that point. But they are, in fact, providing us a vehicle for, uh, four years, uh, uh, to go wherever it needs to go, including there, which is within our ambulance district. So, I, I think if the council looks at it, is this a piece of equipment that need, that's needed? Because we, we are the ones that are gonna, you know, uh, enter into the contract to acquire. It's a lease purchase agreement, so it's, i- it's, uh, subject to annual appropriation. We have to appropriate the money each year to pay for this. But, uh, the PEG has agreed to reimburse us for all those payments. And to the extent they do, uh, other than providing insurance on it, uh, and using it in our ambulance district, we're gonna give it essentially for, for free for that, for that four-year period, other than insurance, gas, and the, and the like. But, you know, we have to respond to the district and, and this is just as, as our chief said, is, is a good alternative for us, because we can utilize other persons, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, at the end of the four years, if they have that option, is that like a, like an immediate option? They have to decide right there, or is that an ongoing option that two years down the road, they can?
I- as long as they've made all payments, uh, as long as they've made all payments on it, uh, they can exercise that, they can give us a dollar and they take the truck.
Well, I mean, though, they have to do it at the end of the lease?
Yeah, well, yeah, they have to, they have to make forty-eight payments on it.
I get that, but you're not understanding what I'm saying. At the end of the lease, do they have like, they have to agree at that point to take the truck back or, or give it to us? One of the two? Cause like, two years down the road after the lease is over, then they can come back for a dollar and get it?
Once the lease is over, they have to tender us a dollar to get the lea- to get the truck.
At the time this lease is over.
At the time it's over.
Right.
Yeah.
And we've been able to use that wherever, just like Bryce said.
Right.
Wherever.
Well, hopefully, they buy it for a dollar, they're gonna give us a new one.
In the actual amount of money-
They've talked about that. The reason why they wanted it, we had put it in originally, and the reason why they asked for it to be struck was that's four years down the road. We don't know exactly what our needs are gonna be, they don't know what their needs are gonna be either. So, let's, let's address it a little bit closer to the end of that, the term lease.
And I will tell you, it only go, they, they only get the vehicle. The vehicle's only a small part of what they're acquiring for us. We're getting this defibrillator, we're getting the stroke chest compression unit. Well, the lights are in there, so, I mean, fo- forty, fifty thousand dollars of it, uh, is not subject to that, because it's, it's just the vehicle. Right?
Say that again?
Uh, it's just the vehicle, it's not the equipment.
No, the vehicle, you know, it's all together.
Okay, it is all together?
That's one of the changes that they made last night.
Okay.
We worked on this all weekend.
Okay. Okay, so it's all of it?
Right. But they don't have to do it. So, we, we have to really be appreciative of their good faith and their goodwill on this, so. It certainly makes, makes the department's life a whole lot easier. And it's eight miles up there.
Right.
Right. What if it's a bust and they can't afford to pay you for the payments?
Pardon?
What if the whole thing is a bust and they can't afford to make the payments?
Then, then, then we have a lease purchase agreement. We have to appropriate the money for that each year. And if you choose not to appropriate the money pursuant to lease purchase, you can walk away from it at any year. I mean, because it's not a loan. It's a lease purchase agreement. Now, that leaves the, you know, that leaves exchange in a bid, because they're the ones in a bid. And so normally, you know, normally, that's not the, normally, you know, those dollars are appropriated. But that is, of course, the risk. If you want to, you know, want to take a look at, that is, of course, the risk.
Any other questions, counsel?
Sorry, it would be with Exchange Bank then.
They were, they were the lowest.
Yeah, there's three bids in there. They come in the lowest percentage.
They came in the lowest, and so that's what I, 2.99.
I'll move to approve the memorandum of understanding and the lease purchase agreement with the financial institution providing the most favorable agreement.
And I'm going to put the word "equipment" back in the document.
Okay.
Vehicle and equipment, okay. Just so that everyone knows.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hold on.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Dobell.
Yes.
Icarus.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Strong.
Yes. Item 12, item 13, any new business that needs to come before the council is seated? Seated none. Item 14?
Motion for adjournment.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Hold on.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Dobell.
Yes.
Icarus.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
White. Yes. Strong.
Yes. Thank you, counsel.